The time is now five o'clock PM. Staff have recommended that the sole item on the closed session be continued and that there are no council members present. As such, all items on the closed session agenda are continued to the next regular meeting of the City Council on December 21st, 2021, starting at 5:00 PM. It is anticipated that the regular meeting of the City Council will promptly start at 6:00 o'clock. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Uba City City Council to order. It's November 16th, 2021. This is our regular meeting. Just as a point of order, we had a closed session scheduled. We didn't have that meeting. The Governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19, also known as the coronavirus. While the Governor recently issued Executive Order N-07-21, which lifted certain orders and associated restrictions, there are still public health directives in place. Executive Order N-08-21 also allows local legislative bodies to continue to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are being... Excuse me. The public's health and well-being are the top priority of the City of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question and answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those who would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public to all here for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Esmondola? Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
Just want to mention that Councilmember Esmondola, I chatted with her earlier this evening. She could barely talk, so she's not going to be joining us this evening. The invocation and inspiration will be provided by Pastor Stephen Baumgartner. Wow. Not to be confused with Boomgarden. Assistant pastor at the First Baptist Church of Uba City. And then the Pledge of Allegiance, if you don't mind, Mr. Reno Rosser, if you could lead us in that. Is he still... He's out there. Brad, can you let him know that I just put him on the spot for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay. Any agenda modifications or approval of the agenda? Mr. City Manager?
Were we going to do the invocation and the pledge now?
invocation and the pledge, and then we'll do... Yeah, we should do that. Okay. Pastor, please.
That's great. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for all the blessings that you have given us and for this great community here and all our leaders that have gathered here tonight, Lord, as we seek your guidance and we seek your wisdom. We are so blessed to experience your goodness each and every day, and we're so thankful for family and friends and all the relationships that you allow us to have. Please strengthen these relationships and protect us from any and all harm. We especially pray for all the officials here and also those that are on the front lines each and every day, our first responders, dealing with any crimes or even just anything that they can do to help us and protect us as police officers and also as fire and EMT and all of our first responders. Lord, please protect them, give them strength and boldness and courage as they serve us each and every day. I also pray for their families as they have to worry about their loved ones, Lord, and also the families of the officials here. Please give them peace, health, and happiness and protect them and all of our officials from any and all evil. Thank you, Lord, for your continued goodness, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve you and the great country that we have here of the United States of America. And we pray all these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Rosser, if you could please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, pastor, and thank you, Mr. Rosser. No closed session items. Now, agenda modifications or approval of the agenda?
With the mayor, item 21 to be deferred until the next regularly scheduled council meeting. I'm sorry, to the regularly scheduled council meeting of December 21st, 2021.
Appreciate that. Just for the public's knowledge, the reason that that has been deferred is in respect and deference to Councilmember Esmondola, who's not here with us tonight. This is an important item, and we have always adopted the philosophy that all council people should be available to weigh in on those items of importance. So as far as ceremonial presentations, we have quite a few tonight, which is excellent. I'm going to jump around a little bit on the agenda. The first one that I would like to call up, I'd like to invite Sarb Tiara, the president of the Sikh Temple, and his board members to join us in front of the podium. We have a proclamation for Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month.
Before I read the proclamation, I'd like you to do us the honor of introducing yourself and the boards, please. This is Sarb Tiara. He is the president.
I'm here. Thank you, Eric, for inviting us for this great occasion for Sikh community and the event that happened on the November 7th. I really appreciate all the city officials through you, the mayor, and our chief, Brian Baker, and all the rest of the staff that has done a great job through this COVID-19 that we had and for having a successful event that we had on November 7th. It couldn't have been possible without you guys. And I would like to give applause to the city, the great job they have done. They stand behind us for the community. I would like to introduce Tajinder Desanj is our secretary, and then you can pass on to anybody else who wants to speak.
Nick Blay.
Chris Mead-Rai.
Jesse Power.
Terry Chima.
Mani Dammy.
Chorin Tambur.
Sukhdev Singh Mudi.
Thank you for your kind words, and we really appreciate you being here tonight. We have a proclamation that we'd like to read and present to you this evening. Whereas Sikhs have been living in the United States for more than 100 years, and Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion in the world, and today there are more than 25 million Sikhs worldwide, and estimated 500,000 Sikhs in the US live in California with the largest concentration living in Uba City, nicknamed Mini Punjab. Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, and have distinguished themselves by fostering greater respect among all people through faith and service. The City of Uba City has a significant population of Sikhs and is committed to respecting the heritage and religions of our diverse community. And today, the City of Uba City Sikhs to further embrace the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experiences of the Sikh Americans. And the Sikh Temple, under the leadership of their president, Sarb Tiara, and their Board of Directors, recently hosted the successful and very well-attended 42nd Nagar Kirtan, which included the return of our annual Sikh parade. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mark Boomgarden, Mayor of the City of Uba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2020 to be Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. And with that, I have a presentation for you, Mr. President. Yes.
Again, I just want to thank the city again for everything you guys have done and really appreciate what you guys are doing for the Sikh community, and we're going to stand all as together as one unity and go through this tough time that we went through, and we will be successful if we stay together. Thank you.
We had a councilman was not here. The ex-mayor, Sean Harris, is here, and I would have Tajinder Desanj make the honor to... For Sean.
Thank you very much.
And we also have another plaque for our other councilperson is not here, and then for Brian Baker also, and we will take care of that on our own. I really appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Next up for this evening's presentations is the Rosser family. If I could please invite them up. Cotton Rosser certainly is a legend in our area, but the entire Rosser family has done so much for the community, and it's our privilege and our pleasure this evening to represent them. But before I get started, I'd like probably you, Reno, to introduce your family to the audience, please.
Well, we couldn't get them all here tonight, but we have Catherine Rosser, Cotton's grandson, Quincy Rosser, myself, Cotton Rosser, Cotton's wife Karen, my lovely wife Nicole, and Cotton's granddaughter Nellie.
Thank you. All right. Please welcome the Rosser family to the council chambers. Whereas Horton Alexander Cotton Rosser was born in Long Beach, California, on the 5th day of August in the year 1928, and the Lord has blessed him with five children: Lee, Cindy, Brian, Reno, Catherine Cotton and Catherine. Cotton is married to Karen for 43 years. Sorry about that. The family business established in 1956 consists of Cotton's Cowboy Corral and the Flying U Rodeo Company, both located in the city of Marysville. His son Reno is the vice president of the Flying U Rodeo Company. Daughter Catherine is the marketing director for the family business. Karen is the quote-unquote "boss," and of course, Cotton is the rodeo producer. The Flying U Rodeo has long been known for outstanding rodeo productions, watching guys do backflips on motorcycles, kids riding sheep... That might have been busting, right? Broncos, bull riding, and just a pure entertainment value putting on 50 rodeos a year when COVID doesn't get in the way. Co-founder of Friends of the Stampede is Nicole Delario, Reno Rosser... It's Nicole Delario Rosser. Reno Rosser's spouse. The foundation of the Rodeo Foundation has built community partnerships and donates funds to local nonprofits such as Giveik, his caring for women foundation, and the Ride Out Cancer Center scholarships. Cotton has acquired numerous honors throughout the state and nation. He is a true cowboy legend, and that's an understatement, and his name, along with the Flying U Rodeo, is known and respected throughout the rodeo industry, and I would say throughout the Uba Sutter region as well. Cotton has three streets named after him in Uba County, a statue in Reno, Nevada, and in 2022, a bronze statue, which you'll hear about in a second, of Cotton on a horse, will be erected in the Plaza Park on 1st Street in Marysville honoring his contributions to The family business promotes the annual historical cattle drive from Uba City, crossing the Twin Cities Memorial Bridge over Cotton Rosser Arena. Vice Mayor Shaw participates in that. The traditional event kicks off the three-day Stampede rodeo that includes the annual fundraiser event, the sod busters, of which I know Nicole is a prime mover in that. The spirit and showmanship of the Old West is alive and well from the Rosser family, and they are a true treasure to our community, and I really believe that, and I know the rest of the council does as well. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mark Boomgarden, Mayor of the City of Uba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby recognize and honor the Rosser family for their tremendous contributions to our community. We urge all residents of the City of Uba City to join me in recognizing the Rosser family on their success and dedication on keeping rodeo alive and for what they do for Uba City and our region. If you'll allow me. This is a proclamation thanking you for everything you've done for our city. I know that the rodeo and all that's not here, but we are a partner, and we certainly appreciate you being in our city and doing what all of you do here for your families. This is for you. That's all the stuff I just said. And if you don't mind, a few words would be awesome.
Well, when I first came here in 1952, Marysville was the hub of this area. And in fact, in '55, when all the car dealers were in Marysville, and all the car dealers in Marysville, they said Marysville was going to break the levee, and they put them all in the Uba City fairgrounds. Wham, midnight, there was 18 feet of water in the fairgrounds. But I really wanted to put this town and area on the map. We do the big Red Buff rodeo in Calphalis, Reno, Las Vegas, all these rodeos we put on the map, and been doing a lot of them for 65 years. We've been trying to get Marysville to be the number-one rodeo headquarters for the Flying U and for a very successful rodeo. We love this area. I came here in 1952 from Southern California and Calphali, and it's just been a great place to live, and I would thank you all for what you're doing and what you're having. From all my family here, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark, and the council for having us here tonight. They always think of the Rossers as Marysville people, but truth be told, Reno, or my wife Nicole and I, we reside on Peas Road. So we are full-blown Uba City residents. We love this community. I think it's really the Uba Sutter Stampede, which is why we start the cattle drive in Uba City. It's an event by the community that's for the community, and like Cotton said, he's been trying to put this event on the map. And now with Nicole and several other local leaders, we now have the help and the vision to make this event as big as some of the best. So thanks again for recognizing us tonight.
As Reno said, Marysville, Uba City, we are Uba Sutter. And we've grown up, I've grown up, our whole family has, where we've had the luxury of traveling the world and producing rodeos throughout the United States. And there's a reason that we always come back home to Uba Sutter. We could have landed anywhere else, but this is where Cotton has set up shop and where we love calling home. And so this is our community, whichever side of the bridge we may be on, but we love it and are so glad to be here and to be able to share what we do with the community, and we hope they enjoy it as much as we do. Thank you.
You've got the other ones that are better speakers than I, but we do thank you for this honor, and we are happy to be part of the Uba Sutter area, and we thank you all
I'm a Uba Sutter transplant and have been here for about 16 years now, and it is such a great community. And to be a part of this family now and bringing rodeo here and for having the community really show up the last few years and support the Marysville Stampede, it's been an amazing transition to watch from just the community getting behind it, from the windows, the business windows, to the cattle drive, to all of the different events that lead up to it. It's an amazing transition, and I'm happy to be a part of it and as family, and we, again, thank you for this honor.
David?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm David Reed from the Uba Sutter Arts Council, and congratulations to the family. I've been to rodeo school this last year as part of the committee that's trying to put together the bronze statue in honor of Mr. Rosser, as was mentioned, right on 1st Street, just to the right of the Silver Dollar and the entrance to the Bakaai Temple. There's a little rise there, and we're working on a one-and-a-quarter times life-size statue of Mr. Rosser on horseback, fully detailed by a tremendous artist named Jeff Wolf. About seven tons of bronze. It's an expensive project. I've got information on the podium outside. If you're interested, all donations from a dollar to six figures are more than welcome, and we need a lot of community support. We're about 20% of the way there, and we're just so excited to try to get this in place by Stampede next year. So it's a beautiful location, and again, it's a great honor for us to be involved in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I think the next thing is a photo op, but I don't want to go without saying thank you so much. Again, yeah, everything seems to happen in Marysville, but we are very fortunate as a city of Uba City to be a part of it, and thank you for including us and thank you for what you do in our community. Now time for the photo. All right. Number two tonight, Small Business Saturday Proclamation. Hope I get this name right. Aaliyah Shine, owner of...
Aaliyah.
Aaliyah, thank you. And I'm going to have a struggle with this one, too. Nina Hive Baby?
Nina Hive.
Okay. I'm 0 for 2. Nina Hive Baby and Children's Clothing Store and Michaela Russell. Did I get that one right? Awesome. Owner of the Burning Wick Candle Company. Please come forward to this this evening. All right. Small Business Saturday, and these are a couple of small business owners that are joining us up here this evening. Whereas locally-owned businesses contribute to our unique and vibrant community character, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the glue that holds communities together, creating jobs, boosting the local economy, and preserving our neighborhoods. In 2019, US shoppers who shopped at independent retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday reported spending a record-high total of an estimated $19.6 billion. Seven in 10 American adults reported being aware of this day, Small Business Saturday. Consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. We certainly believe that. 95% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop or eat at small, independently-owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. We are grateful to the small, locally-owned businesses of Uba City for their generous contribution to the quality of life that we all enjoy. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mark Boomgarden, Mayor of the City of Uba City, and on behalf of our entire City Council, do hereby recognize November 27th as Small Business Saturday and urge the citizens of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. I have a couple of proclamations. Now's the speaking moment.
Okay. I'm Aaliyah Shine, and I started my small business last year in June of 2020. Right smack dab in the middle of everything, I thought, hey, let me open a clothing store, which everybody told me was crazy and that I shouldn't do, but the community has done so much for us. This year, we were able to open not only one but two storefronts and are now moving to Clumice Street, hopefully by the end of the year. And all of that is because of the community, the community's support, and we're just really thankful.
We're thankful to have you.
Hello. My name's Michaela, and I'm the owner of the Burning Wick Candle Co. I've been making candles for about two years now, and I opened my first storefront in April at the Hillcrest Plaza, and it's been pretty amazing. Working in small business, you meet a lot of people. I met Aaliyah this time last year. November's our one-year anniversary, and it's been a lot of fun, and I appreciate being invited here tonight as a small business. It really means a lot to myself, and I know Aaliyah as well.
We appreciate you doing business in the City of Uba City and joining us tonight to receive these proclamations, and... All right. All right. Homeless Awareness Month proclamation, and I'd like to invite Gaia Kalicia, Vice President of Strategic Planning for the Uba Sutter Homeless Consortium, to come forward. Welcome. How are you? Homelessness Awareness Month, November 2021. Whereas homelessness is a challenge that has existed in Uba City across the state and throughout the nation for many decades, impacting the lives of individuals and families, many of whom come from our own neighborhoods, Uba City partners with numerous public and private agencies to develop solutions to homelessness that truly address the underlying situations for each individual who finds himself or herself homeless. Since 2016, Uba City and its partners have been rapidly implementing shelter and housing programs that are designed with the best practices to resolve homelessness. Programs such as the Uba City Police Department's Homeless Liaison Officer, Better Way, Hands of Hope, Habitat for Humanity, and the Coordinated Entry System have been achieving successes as collaborative resources added within the last five years, increasing shelter beds and housing stock. The people of Uba City recognize that homelessness continues to be a serious problem for hundreds of individuals and families in the region, and that we as a community cannot stand idly by as long as this struggle continues. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mark Boomgarden, Mayor of the City of Uba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, hereby joins in recognition of Homelessness Awareness Month, encourages all citizens to be aware that many people do not have housing and need support from residents as well as public and private service entities. I think I first met you, and you're like the champion of all these homelessness areas. So this is quite an honor to be able to give you this proclamation and invite you to speak to us tonight about Homelessness Awareness Month and all the things that...
homelessness. As we know, homelessness is a challenging and complex topic and it really takes all of us working together and understanding the issues that feed into homelessness and the issues that impede our ability to resolve homelessness. And so the more we can bring awareness to those things, the better we can work together on solutions. And throughout the month, we have a Facebook campaign, like a media campaign, and there's all sorts of information that we're pushing out throughout the month of November and it will all be available on our Facebook site. So it's the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium Facebook. Yeah, and so thank you so much. There's so much information, but you can't say it in two seconds. So go to our Facebook site and look at the campaign and what we're doing.
Thank you. I know that one of the things that we're going to try to do is have a meeting and this will take place probably after the first of the year, just to bring together all those that are providing services to the homeless, just so that we and the public understand all the good things. So you'll have a little more in two seconds then, okay? But anyway, thank you for being here this evening and we really do appreciate what you and the others are doing to try to help with this problem. Thank you very much. Where's James at? There he is. Good. We're gonna sit back here for your presentation, if that's okay. Tonight, we are privileged to have Secog Executive Director James Corliss with us and we are looking very forward to hearing what's going on with Secog. Good to have you here, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, it's great to be here again. It's been a while since I've been able to come up here and speak to you in person. Again, James Corliss, I'm Executive Director of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. Okay, I'll start over. Okay, all right. Let's rewind. We'll do that again. I'm James Corliss, I'm Executive Director of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. So I just wanted to come up and give you really an update on the things that are happening at our agency and across the six counties. And maybe just, we're delighted to have Councilmember Harris, as you are Representative of Yuba City, on the Secog Board of Directors. I will note, so we cover six counties and 22 cities. For such a large land area, the greater Sacramento region, we have every single jurisdiction that sits around our table twice a month. And every other large area regional planning agency like ours, that is not the case. You rotate through, one person represents 10 or 12 jurisdictions. So among the many reasons why we think we're special. Secog in its current form and incarnation has really been around about 40 years, since 1981, but we really took a big leap forward with what we call the Blueprint Project and Program back in 2004. And in many ways, if I had to sum up what we do, obviously, we're an association of local governments, we represent all of you. We look across, so we look across the 28 jurisdictions. We try to figure out, what do we have in common? How do we actually flex our muscle at the state Capitol and the US Congress? How can we be greater than the sum of all of our parts? So we look across the region. We look across time because one of our bread and butter things we do is regional planning and long-range planning. So we're about to kick off our next Long Range Transportation and Growth Plan for the six counties that will actually envision what this region should look like in 2050. So we're gonna look across nearly 30 years on our upcoming Long Range Plan. We look across generations and I'm gonna end with just a note tonight on the fourth year of our Youth Leadership Academy. We take high school students from all over the region and run them through what does it mean to be a regional planner? And finally, I would just, I think many of you know this, but we obviously do a lot of transportation investment and we're proud that while it's now open, we were able to help you and us look across to a river, to either side of Yuba City and Marysville with a Fifth Street Bridge. And that, I know, was the hard work of your staff and my staff and Marysville and Caltrans, but we were able to get that Fifth Street Bridge invested in and done and we're very proud of that and look forward to more of that ahead. So, okay, I'm gonna give you a quick highlight on about five things here. There's a lot more that I could tell you tonight, I'm just trying to condense it down into a really, a quick update from our vantage point. Obviously, the federal infrastructure bill that just passed and was signed yesterday is a big, big deal and we want to make sure that Yuba City, but our entire region, really is ready. We want to be investment-ready and take advantage of those broad programs, not just transportation, as you know, water, broadband, and many other things, electric vehicles. So there's a lot more, I'd be happy to answer any questions on. So I want to start tonight with a project that I know you and your staff here at Yuba City, and I want to just commend you on, by the way, your staff and just how great they have been. They've been engaged in Secog programs, they're right there with us on a lot of these efforts. And this is our Regional Trails Plan. So we are envisioning what would it look like to connect all six counties, 22 cities, with a network of trails, biking and walking trails. Imagine getting from Tahoe to the greater Sacramento region, up here to Yuba Sutter, all the way down to the Delta and to the Bay Area and never actually having to cross a busy road or touch, you know, bike on a road. The notion of that is a game changer. It's transformative. And this region is perfect because we, as you know, are the, we were the transportation hub. We started with levees, canals, railroads, we moved stuff, we moved trains, and all of those old corridors, now even utility corridors, actually can help get repurposed and reimagined, much as your corridor here in Yuba City that you're looking at into actually safe, walkable, beautiful trails, right? It connects not just the Buttes and Yuba City, but imagine the benefits of things like tourism with that interconnected trail network. So these are just two examples I'm showing you here, images. On the right-hand side, completely a game changer in the Midwest. This is called the Industrial Heartlands Trail Vision. As you can see here, this is Western Pennsylvania, Ohio, the tip of, just the edge of New York State and West Virginia, so four states. And they are taking all of their old freight rail corridors that are now abandoned and they are transforming them into a complete, entirely new network of trails. By the way, so this is a vision, they're working very hard on this, this is an all-in effort, not just local government, but business and philanthropy, and they're creating this network of trails. Right now, and this is only just recent, you can actually ride your bike from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania to Washington DC. There is now a connected trail that goes all the way from Pittsburgh to Washington DC. And on the left-hand side, I'm just giving you one image of what that means. So you might think, well, that's cool, on a Saturday, I can go get, ride my bike and I can get out to the Buttes or I can get wherever. But that image on the left is from a corridor called the Katy Trail. The Katy Trail is an old railroad corridor that spanned the state of Missouri, Kansas City to St. Louis, old railroad corridor transformed into a trail. And now what they see is economic development, they see tourism, they see restaurants and B&amp;Bs and things reopening and popping up to serve the people that come there and to ride those trails. So this is a game changer. This is a great thing for kids to get to school safely and for you to ride your bike on a Saturday safely, but actually, it's also an economic game changer. And we think this region is really well-positioned. Our staff's been working hard with your staff and again, I want to thank you for your cooperation on this Regional Trails Plan with a number of the trail opportunities that you have here, connecting again to the Buttes and over to Marysville. This is a hard-to-read, I know, timeline. The most important thing here is, we're about to release a draft of this regional network. We'd love to get your comments and your community's comments on this and we're gonna take it back in the spring, try to put it together and adopt it. And frankly, again, just talking about the infrastructure bill and some of the things that are happening at the state level, we know that what's coming is some pilot regions for these kind of bicycle freeway, bicycle highway networks, trail networks. We want to be one of the first. We want to be one of the first in the state of California. We want to be ready with that Regional Trails Plan. Second piece, I just want to, I know this has come before the council, this is our Green Means Go program. And so, give you just a general sense of what this is. The green of this region, there's the six counties, as you can tell, and the green actually is our existing, developed footprint of the region, right? So that's all of our urbanized area. As you might imagine, we can actually accommodate a lot of new economic development and housing growth on that existing footprint, but it is harder. It is harder to develop, it is harder to get a developer to come in and say, oh yeah, I can make something pencil in an older commercial corridor, in a vacant lot, or an old parking lot, an underutilized strip mall where the retail is becoming vacant. So part of what makes that hard is the infrastructure, or it might be your specific plans on the edge of Yuba City that you want to get sparked and get going. So we are trying to stand up a program to fund the infrastructure, the water, the sewer utility upgrades, that allows then that development to pencil. And I'm glad to say that we just got $38 million from the state of California in the budget this year to begin this grant program. We aim to roll this out in early 2022. We'd love to see participation from Yuba City in this. And really importantly, this is an economic development program, it's an infill and housing program to get more housing built in the existing urban footprint or on the edge in your specific plan areas. But interestingly, this is also an environmental program because we know for a fact, with real data and big data, that the people in these green areas actually drive less. The vehicle you drive, but the amount of miles you drive is less. And frankly, in Yuba City and Marysville, some of the lowest overall average distances driven of the entire six-county region. So we can get people to live here and put more housing here, we actually know that people will drive less than, say, if you live much further out. That is part of the state's climate strategy and that's part of what we're trying to connect the dots with, with the state of California. So stay tuned, there will be more on Green Means Go. I am really happy to say that in these kind of divided times, we had all of our delegation and the Assembly and the state senate supporting this, Republican and Democrat, all 28 local jurisdictions supporting this program, and that is part of the reason that we were able to win the funding in the last state budget. Another exciting project, it was great to hear your awards just now and I will say, that is what makes your community special, between the SEEK Festival and the families you just recognize in your small businesses. But if you can remember, I'm sure a longtime resident of this region will remember, and maybe I'll even, I'm gonna be dangerous by going ahead and coming back a slide, but there used to be passenger rail service, there used to be a train station just across the river in Marysville. In that infrastructure bill is more money for passenger rail than frankly has been here for decades. It's hours for the taking. And we are really proud to be supporting feasibility study with Butte County, Yuba Sutter, Caltrans, and the ACE and San Joaquin Valley Rail Commission to look at extending the Amtrak-San Joaquin service and the ACE rail potentially up from downtown Sacramento to Marysville, Yuba City, possibly Oroville, and possibly Chico. This is a study that was just awarded a grant by Caltrans a couple of months ago. It's getting, I believe proposals are coming in. Butte County is leading this, but we're a partner in this. We'd be happy to come back and give you all a detailed update on this. The scoping of this is gonna happen over the next 12 months and again, it's one of those things of just being ready, being ready for the available funding that's coming from the federal level and the state level. This, I would tell you, if I was here 12 months ago, this is 25 years off, this is 30 years off, this is 40 years off. But our hope now with the infrastructure bill and some of the things the state is doing, is we hope we can accelerate this project and bring rail service back. And again, for, I'm kind of a history geek, so I love all this kind of stuff, this is the old Sacramento Northern Route Map and your ticket up to Chico from Sacramento, but you know that this is the, actually, a lot of the rail is still there and what we're aiming to do is hope to see something like this once again, one day, actually. You'll be able to hear the sound of the passenger train, not have it come through and not stop, I think, like it sometimes does on Amtrak. Just a couple more exciting projects. We're very aware and have heard of the truck parking issue that I know you have here in Yuba Sutter and Yuba City. We've actually just repurposed a grant that we provided to Sutter County to look at some feasibility on truck parking sites. The thing that we have also just put into Caltrans and I would say, I think the other kind of win-win here is truck parking and trying to figure out how to accommodate trucks, but also looking at a zero-emission clean truck, clean freight strategy for the Yuba Sutter region. Again, there's, before, a lot of the state mandates come in on zero-emission trucks, there is money to be had, there's incentives, and if you can kind of see that map there, very, again, maybe a little hard to see, but the 99 corridor is on the state map for heavy-duty truck charging, potential fuel cell grid. It actually, this is our, this is actually our Northern California mega-region because we put a grant in as the Bay Area, Sacramento, San Joaquin County mega-region. So that's why you see gridling Yuba City up there, but actually, these corridors extend up I-5 and 99 up and down the valley. So we want to know what it might look like and how we might be able to partner with you and your institutions and even places like Yuba College to look at workforce opportunities around the coming electrification and the clean fuel, especially in the heavy-duty sector, which is, again, another game changer, along with autonomous trucks. And I mentioned again, just to close, tonight on our Youth Leadership Academy, we're about to kick off our next annual cohort. This spans the six counties and we're hopeful that we get a good, diverse range of students and we also may well ask some of you to actually participate and it's been wonderful to get these high school students to actually talk to their Assembly members, their state senators, their members of Congress, to understand what it means to think about the future because frankly, we say we look across time, we're doing a plan for 2050, this is who we're doing the plan for, right? So we want to get, as I know you have a youth commission, we'd be happy, by the way, to come talk to your youth commission at any point, but we want to get youth empowered and understanding that that train I showed you and a lot of the stuff I've just showed you is about their future and getting them involved now is going to be critical. There's again, a lot more I could say, I just wanted to give you a couple of highlights of, I think, the really exciting work that's going on. I am really bullish on this larger, greater Sacramento region and Yuba Sutter being part of it, in terms of what we can pull off at the state Capitol and in Congress. We are stronger together, we are really delighted to have you at the table as Yuba City and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Before I have a couple of comments, any, Mr. Kirchner? First and foremost, thank you so much. You know, ever since I've been on the council in 2018, have been nothing but impressed with the support that Secog has provided to the City of Yuba City and also thank you for your kind words about our staff. I know they feel that the working relationship is awesome and I think that is something that benefits hopefully both of us. The projects that you've explained to us this evening are exciting, to say the least. I would say that, I have one question, maybe two. The first one is, we have these old abandoned train corridors here and we've, you know, recently received presentations about the necessity of cleaning them up. Is any of this money available to help remediate any of that or is that still something that we would have to try to take care of prior to taking advantage of these corridors?
It's a great question, Mayor Boomgarden. There's different pots of money that are available, frankly, none of them are quite enough. We're trying to get a plan together to identify these corridors that then is really anticipating future funding coming. So what I'd want to do is kind of get back to you on the remediation piece in particular. There may be some things at CalEPA or US EPA that might be helpful in that, you know, and again, we'll work, my commitment to you is to work closely with your staff to identify some of those funding sources. The other thing, by the way, just on the trails plan that I just want to throw out there, is the economy of scale of looking across something like a six counties or a regional trail network, I know you have to potentially to bridge some highways, you gotta, you know, there's a lot of bridging over things, right? You've got some highways to bridge over, we've got a lot of creeks to bridge over, we've got a lot of bridges. Well, rather than actually doing one-offs, what about a general umbrella procurement, right, on actually maybe even some prefab or basically doing economy of scale around procurement for doing things like that? So we can get across those facilities, whether they're high-speed roadways or they're, you know, canals or creeks, right, that we need to bridge and that actually, it's relatively expensive, but it costs might come down. So I'm happy to get back to you on remediation. I know that's a big deal, not just for you. members, their state senators, their members of Congress, to understand what it means to think about the future. Because frankly, we say we look across time, we're doing a plan for 2050, this is who we're doing the plan for, right? So we want to get, as I know you have a youth commission, we'd be happy, by the way, to come talk to your youth commission at any point. But we want to get youth empowered and understanding that that train I showed you and a lot of the stuff I've just showed you is about their future. And getting them involved now is going to be critical. There's again, a lot more I could say. I just wanted to give you a couple, a couple of highlights of, I think, the really exciting work that's going on. We, I am really bullish on this larger, greater Sacramento region and Yuba Sutter being part of it in terms of what we can pull off at the state Capitol and in Congress. We are stronger together. We are really delighted to have you at the table as Yuba City, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Before I have a couple of comments, any? Mr. Kirchner?
First and foremost, thank you so much. You know, ever since I've been on the council in 2018, have been nothing but impressed with the support that SA-COG has provided to the city of Yuba City. And also, thank you for your kind words about our staff. I know they feel that the, the working relationship is awesome. And, and I think that is something that benefits hopefully both of us. The projects that you've explained to us this evening are exciting, to say the least. I would say that, I have one question, maybe two. The first one is, we have these old abandoned train corridors here, and we've, you know, recently received presentations about the necessity of cleaning them up. Is any of this money available to help remediate any of that? Or is that still something that we would have to try to take care of prior to, to taking advantage of these corridors?
It's a great question, Mayor Boon Garden. There's different pots of money that are available. Frankly, none of them are quite enough. Where we're trying to get a plan together to identify these corridors that then is really anticipating future funding coming. So what I'd want to do is kind of get back to you on the remediation piece in particular. There may be some things at CalEPA or US EPA that, that might be helpful in that, you know? And again, we'll work, my, my commitment to you is to work closely with your staff to identify some of those funding sources. The other thing, by the way, just on the trails plan that I, I just want to throw out there as the economy of scale of looking across something like a six counties or a regional trail network. I know you have to potentially to bridge some highways, you've got, you know, there's a lot of bridging over things, right? You've got some highways to bridge over. We've got a lot of creeks to bridge over. We've got a lot of bridges. Well, rather than actually doing one-offs, what about a general umbrella procurement, right? On actually maybe even some prefab or basically doing economy of scale around procurement for doing things like that? So we can get across those, those facilities, whether they're high-speed roadways or they're, you know, canals or creeks, right, that we, that we need to bridge. And that actually, it's relatively expensive, but it costs might come down. So I'm happy to get back to you on remediation. I know that's a big deal, not just for you.
Yeah, I'm sure it's with others as well. Recently, this is more of a statement of hopefully how interested we are. We were recently with the counties up here in the north, primarily Butte County, the first, the first counties that had 100-year, 200-year flood protection, first in the region. So we like to be first. So if there's anything that we can do, and I know Councilperson Harris is heavily engaged with you, and we have a lot of confidence in his representation of us. But again, I would just close by saying, thank you so much for all that you've done. Every time I go over the Fifth Street Bridge, I think of James Corliss. I know there was a lot of people that were involved with that, and Diana, and Kevin, and others that are, and Ben probably too. But anyway, you know, what a great piece for our community. And, you know, that, that thing is just huge. Any other? Yes, sir.
Through the mayor. I just had, I did have a quick question. Can you circle back? You talked about how the county had acquired a grant for, for a study on the, the trucking issue on a 99 corridor. Can you, can you expand on what exactly that is?
Yeah, there was a planning grant that we provided to them, and, and we have, you know, we do these, and I didn't even mention this, but we, we did fund, I believe, two, two of your road projects in our last four-county transportation funding round. So those are the capital projects. I think, I think you were two for two on those requests. But we had these smaller $100,000 planning grants. We gave one to Sutter County. And we're, we are able to be flexible in those planning grants. And when the truck parking issue has really, I know, risen a lot in the last 12 months, we were able to repurpose that to look at the feasibility of the location of some parking facilities. Speaking of your floodplain, I know that's one of your issues you have, right, is actually building something like truck parking in the floodplain. But also, the other is to look at what we hope would be combining a parking facility with actually a fueling facility, right? So what's the, what's the, what's the potential and possibility, like I showed you a couple of slides ago, to look at something that could be a pilot project around electrification or hydrogen fuel cells. So it's a feasibility study. I'd be happy to get you more information if you'd like to, I could follow up with you very.
So at the conclusion of that study, you, you give the, the county recommendations. And at that point?
Yeah, it's really, we provided the grant to the county, so we'll work with them. But they go out and do an RFP. They secure, I would imagine, a consultant, and they will come back. The consultant will come back and then say, I'm guessing on this part, right? Here are some, here are some sites. I know it's, I know it's a real challenge, right? This is one of those problems where if, if there was an easy answer, maybe it would have been done by now. But, but, but again, to maybe put some resources in, taking another look at some sites, maybe they're a little further out of the, because it's, it's the county grant, I would, I would hope they could work with you, obviously, as the city. Again, I think, you know, the opportunity is, you need, you need to park and you need your trucks, as I understand it, sort of touching the surface on this, need to get them out of residential areas and hopefully. But if we're doing that, can you actually look at something that also could be a win-win on this electrification and clean, you know, zero emission strategy? So, so stay tuned on that. Thank you.
Other questions from the council or comments?
Yes, I can't let you go without saying thank you, James. You know, a wonderful presentation, as always, very well informed. It's a pleasure working with you, everything we have going on, and then some. And looking forward to a good 2022. So thank you very much. It's very, very encouraging, some of the things. We, I've touted the bike path a lot, and we'll continue to do so. And it was nice to have my colleagues here and the public hear from you as well, the subject matter expert on that. A lot of potential. It's going to be a really, really good thing when we get it going. So thank you very much.
Thank you, council member. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good to see you, as always. All right, we're moving on to item number six, which is the appearance of interested citizens. Citizens are welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be considered at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited. And large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Members of the public will have three minutes to speak. And I do have a card from Heather Esman. Welcome, Heather. You rode your bike?
Yes. And I'm still waiting for Councilwoman Harris to contact me because she said he needed my help with some bike past stuff.
I will.
It's right. I'm a, come on. So anyways, my name's Heather Esman. I live on 2020 Lincoln Road, so I'm in Yuba City. I wanted to give you an update on some things and kind of an invite. And I'm, I'm going to speak for myself and not for the, the director of the department. But, so there was a presentation recently that talked about a grant that we received from the urban forestry. So I'm talking as a, like a city tree advisory, not the other part. And so there, the grant is for 500 trees. And we haven't gotten very far with that. And I think a lot of it had to do with, you know, change of management, and there's some placement issues where they plan to place certain things and it's not working out very well. It's been extended twice. It's up in March of 2023. And some of the planting of the trees are also along the Bridge Street way and Moore Park. Do you know what Moore Park is, where that is? It's Cooper and Bridge right there. So, which is basically just a green space at the moment. There are some plans for that, but there are, there are trees that are scheduled to be planted there and trees that are scheduled to be planted in the, in the median eventually. I think there was some issues with the other trees. But just wanted to let you know that there is a time crunch on that. It would be kind of a disadvantage if we were to lose that for the, the amount of trees that we could plant. And encourage you to reach out to Brad McIntyre if you're interested in planting some trees because we need volunteers. According to the people in the department, they told me that the more volunteers we have, that is our matching part eventually for some of this. So we have a certain percentage that we have to provide, and we can provide that in free labor. So he just needs a nice, long list of people that attended and can write that up as, as helpers for planting. I, I'm hoping that we can get the first planting started with a local business, but trying to bring some people together, it's not always easy. And I encourage you to, if you're interested in helping beautify Yuba City, and you have anybody that might be interested in planting some trees to get a group together. We have some plantings that are just three trees and some plantings that are like 50 trees. So we'll have to see what happens. But it would be, I don't think, I can't imagine them extending it one more time because it's already been extended twice and we're not in the COVID situation anymore. So the, the schedule for the bridge, and Diane Langley could tell you that, but I, I just asked, they said tentatively at the end of 2022 is when they're hoping to have it done. So we really have a very small window of when we can, because that has to be done before we can plant the trees, obviously, right? So we have a very small, short window. And some of the trees are, can be pretty expensive. They're about $100 a piece on some of them. So I just wanted to let you know that. And then outside of booster shots, I'm kind of going, I think I'm going to go ahead and go. I apologize.
Thank you, Heather. Always good to hear from you. And perhaps, city manager, a short note on, on where we're at with that and the plan, and certainly want to help if, if we can do that. Thank you. Safe travels. Anybody online, Sarah?
No public comment.
Okay. Consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Is there anybody from the public like to speak on these items? I'm not seeing anybody here.
No public comment.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the council for action on the consent calendar.
Through the mayor. Move to approve consent calendar items seven through 16.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Shaw, seconded by Councilperson Harris on approval of the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item number 17, purchases, you might want to go get Mr. Morrison. Purchase of heavy lifts presented by Spencer Morrison, our finance director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for indulging me while I collect some bicycle-friendly community information.
Imagine that, you and Mr. Kirchner.
Got some great ideas here. So we need heavy lifts in our, our fleet maintenance department. We do have 60 vehicles that require a heavy lift. Two lifts were removed recently, one of which I, or at least one of which I understand may be the same age as me. So I was happy to hear that we don't have people standing under that lift today. We need more than just one lift, which is functioning right now, to operate fully and provide the service that the fleet department, fleet maintenance needs to provide to the departments. Public Works and Fleet budgeted $69,000 in this current budget year for a new, for new lifts. We have looked at, considered outsourcing, but it, we believe it does end up being more expensive and the turnaround time is slower. So there were four area vendors quoted. We ended up going with the Napa Auto Parts as it holds a Sourcewell contract, and it's a very competitive price. The cost for a set of six lifts is going to be $58,867. And staff recommends a, to adopt a resolution awarding the purchase of six heavy lifts to Napa Auto Parts of Atlanta, Georgia in the amount of $58,867 through Sourcewell Open Contract, number 032512521GPC, finding that it is in the best interest of the city to do so. Do you have any questions for me?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Any questions from the council? All right. Any comment from the public? Ben? No? Okay.
No public comment.
All right. Thank you. Bring back item number 17, sorry. Bring, bring back item number 17 to the council.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution awarding the purchase of six heavy lifts to Napa Auto Parts of Atlanta, Georgia in the amount of $58,867 through Sourcewell Open Contract, 032521-GPC, with the finding that it is in the best interest of the city.
Second.
I have, I have a motion by Councilperson Kirchner, a second based upon a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw to give that to Councilperson Harris. All those in favor of item number 17 signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, item 17 passes unanimously. Item number 18, American Rescue Plan Act Funding, Harder Bridge Sewer Trunk Connection, Boge Road Stewart, man, Boge Road Sewer Extension, presented by Diana Langley.
Evening, mayor and council. So under the American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARPA, the city will receive $15.6 million, split equally between this current fiscal year and next fiscal year. Eligible uses include infrastructure, so water, wastewater, broadband, stormwater. And so when we did our wastewater master plan in 2020, as part of that process, we evaluated the existing collection system, then also infrastructure required to serve new development. And so there are two projects that have popped up to the forefront, one being the Harder Bridge Sewer Trunk Connection. There's an existing 12-inch sewer line on Lassen Boulevard between Harder Parkway and Walton Avenue that, under certain circumstances today, is at capacity. And so as we continue to expand and develop to the northwest with new subdivisions such as Hooper Ranch and Dunn, Dunn Ranch, and then also with development in Harder Estates, this line will continue to be impacted. And so we're recommending to extend a 24-inch sewer line. So currently, right now, there's a 24-inch sewer line that ends at the south end of Harder Parkway. We're recommending to follow the alignment of the proposed Harder Parkway. Currently, these are orchards. And then continue east along the proposed future extension of Bridge Street to tie into an existing 24-inch sewer line on Harding Road. And so this project cost is about $2 million, and we're requesting $2 million in ARPA funds. And what this does is relieve some of the flows on this 12-inch Lassen line, which improves that, but then also allows us to serve additional development in the northwestern portion of the city. The Boge Road Sewer Extension, there's currently an existing eight-inch, 18-inch sewer line on Boge Road just east of Railroad Avenue. It has capacity to serve additional development, and we're proposing to extend it west on Boge Road to the Phillips Road intersection, where we would also build a lift station. And so what a lift station does is, because Yuba City's flat, it allows you to go to a certain depth with the pipelines. You then pump it up, and then you're able to flow gravity again downstream. And so by doing this, this would allow us to serve properties within the Boge Stewart Master Plan, which is, I can't speak tonight, recently approved by council. And then also, it would allow us to serve properties on the north side of Boge Road at such a point in time if those properties decided to convert to city sewer. All of those properties, so the, the existing development in what we call the Keyhole area is on septic systems. And so in the future, if they needed to connect to city sewer, we would have this line. Ultimately, what we would like to do is be able to extend a line west beyond Highway 99 to Walton Avenue, and then eventually Sam Bourne Road. Not that this 18-inch sewer line would necessarily do that, but what we would propose, the next phase would be to extend an 18-inch sewer line from Phillips Road to west of Gilseizer Slough. Use that in the future as a force main, use it today as a gravity line, use it in the future as a force main, and that allows you to start to implement the master plan. The, again, here's the map that shows the existing 18-inch line ends here on Boge Road. We would extend it further west and have a lift station here at Phillips. We would also stub out sewer lines to these two side roads to serve them in the future. The estimated cost for that project is $3 million. We're requesting $2 million in ARPA funds, and then we would use wastewater funds for the additional $1 million. An alternative is to not authorize the finance director to transfer ARPA funds into these projects. However, staff recommends utilizing the ARPA funds for these two important sewer projects. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Langley. Any questions from the council?
Through the mayor. Yes. Ms. Langley, the question I have has to do with the one of Harder Parkway.
Yes.
And I had mentioned this when I, when I met with the city manager on that one. We've identified in previous that we've got more houses to the west of El Margarita and stuff that eventually we have to reach to. And you reminded me of the Lassen shortfall there. Are we, is somehow, are we going to be able to reach going west off of this? Because where will that have to come from? Because that seemed to be an issue a few years ago. I remember us talking about it.
So that area in the far northwestern portion of the city would need to eventually go down George Washington Boulevard to Boge Road. So this Boge Road extension would help to implement that to some extent, but eventually there's a 48-inch gravity line, or it would be a smaller pressure line that would need to go from the wastewater treatment facility west along Boge Road to George Washington Boulevard, then go north on George Washington Boulevard to connect at Highway 20. A lot of sewer lines in that area are already plumbed to George Washington and Highway 20. So it's, right now, they're currently being diverted to this Lassen line. Eventually, they would be diverted to the south through these larger trunk lines. And it's going to take a lot of time to get there. In terms of this specific line, it does help to relieve the load so that we can add some additional subdivisions within that area, but the overall conversion would require that large trunk line up George Washington Boulevard.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Dana, you mentioned like a pressurized line. Where is, how do we get the pressure into the system?
Pumps. And so with the lift stations, they, they pump the wastewater into the pipes, and you do it, I mean, you get very technical, to create a self-cleaning velocity so that the pipes remain cleaned, because you're dealing with wastewater.
Yeah.
the pipes remain cleaned, because you're dealing with wastewater. And so, you would have large pumps that pump the wastewater for extended distances to get to the wastewater treatment facility. So, what's the benefit of that? You have to really do a cost-benefit analysis of a larger diameter gravity main, which is going to cost more in upfront construction versus a smaller diameter pressure main that will have longer-term operational costs.
So, at the lift stations, there's pumps there regardless, right?
Yes.
They just do double duty?
Yes.
I find it interesting that the map looks like a small intestine or a large intestine.
I'll just, I will not comment.
Well, you're talking about relieving pressure and all this other stuff, and I just, okay. I had to do it. Sorry.
Shannon just covered his eyes.
I took biology.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Last meeting as a mayor.
Very appropriate.
Okay. Here, public comment. Okay. Seeing none. How about online?
No public comment.
All right. Bring this item back to the council for...
Oh, it would be my pleasure to move to approve staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
Second.
Relieve that pressure.
All right. We have a motion from councilperson Harris, second by Vice Mayor Shaw on item number 18. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Item 18 passes unanimously. We'll move to item number 19, Sidewalk Maintenance and Repairs Ordinance. And again, Ms. Langley.
So, most property owners do not realize that California Streets and Highways Code Sections 5600 through 5630 govern the maintenance of sidewalks. And so, what the Streets and Highways Code says is that property owners are responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalks along their property. So, for most properties, it's the frontage. If you're a corner lot, it's the frontage and the side. And then, also, Title IX, Chapter III of the City Municipal Code provides that property owners must keep sidewalks and planting strips in a safe condition. So, even though we have those requirements, it doesn't address liability. And California courts have held that the city can be held liable for injuries as a result of private sidewalk damage if the city has not adopted a sidewalk liability ordinance. And where this comes into play is we'll get trip and fall injuries throughout the city, and the next thing you know, the city's receiving a claim for these trip and fall injuries because it was a raised sidewalk or something like that. And then, we get into a situation where we're having to defend against that. We have to pull records to show, were we aware of the issue? Did we perform any maintenance? Did we notify the property owner? And so, the purpose of this ordinance is to address the liability of sidewalk maintenance. So, the proposed ordinance affirms property owners' responsibilities outlined in the Streets and Highways Code and the municipal code. It also defines a hazard. So, this is very important because, you know, as you're walking around and you're looking at raised sidewalks or separated sidewalks, through this ordinance, we would be able to define what a hazard is. The city may, at its discretion, make repairs or provide tree mitigation to ease the burden caused by street trees. So, you know, where it's become problematic is in the subdivisions that were developed in the early 2000s, where you have planter strips with city street trees that were planted. Those trees were watered based upon surface irrigation, and so, the tree roots are very superficial. And a lot of times, we have raised sidewalks because of those shallow tree roots. And so, they're, through this ordinance, we would have discretion to determine whether or not the city should make the repairs versus the property owner, but the liability would remain with the property owner. So, the ordinance codifies the property owner notification procedures. We'd be required to give them two notifications. The path for the property owners to request time extensions, if they can't get to it immediately, they can request a tiny extension of up to 90 days. Allowances for the city to perform repairs when property owner fails to do so. And then, the administrative citation process, because this would be considered a nuisance to be able to pursue repayment eventually through the lien process if necessary. An alternative would be to direct staff to modify the terms of the proposed ordinance, but staff is recommending to introduce an ordinance to establish the sidewalk maintenance and repair responsibilities by adding Chapter 11 to Title VI of the municipal code. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Langley?
Diana, is there a procedure in place, forgive me if I missed it, to notify homeowners of this responsibility?
Yes. So, there's two notifications that we would give them.
Got it. Thank you.
I would also ask, and also forgive if I missed it, if a property owner needs to get their sidewalk repaired but doesn't have the financial means to do so, is there a payment method or anything that we can offer in conjunction with this to get it taken care of?
We don't have anything in place right now to be able to do a payment method. That's one thing that we could bring forward is a policy to, in order to do that, and we'd have to determine what the interest rate would be, similar to what we're doing with the water and wastewater connection fees, and that there's an option for a property owner to pay it over a period of time. And if that's council's direction, then we would prepare that policy to come forward for council approval.
This might be an unfair question, but typically, if it's a lifted piece of sidewalk because of the, or something like that, what is that, any idea as ballpark of what that's going to cost the property owner?
It's going to be a few hundred dollars. We would waive the permit fee, but the contractor would need to come out, remove the sidewalk, address the tree root issue, perhaps remove some of the adjacent ground, and then repour the sidewalk. And so, you're talking, you know, it could likely be within the $1,000 to $2,000 range, depending upon the number of sidewalk squares that need to be replaced.
I could see where that possibly could be a burden, but you're saying the majority of this is in homes that are probably in that early 2000s vintage, but...
No, I wish I could say that. We do have more street tree problems within those areas, but if you go through downtown, there's issues with sidewalks all over the place. The other benefit of this ordinance is that by putting the liability on the property owners, you know, if there's a sidewalk issue, when we get claims now, the expectation is the city should have known. And a lot of times, we don't know because there's so many issues throughout the city. And so, by doing this and, you know, notifying property owners that they are responsible for the maintenance and the liability, we're hoping that that will encourage more property owners to take more proactive approach to address these issues with sidewalks along their properties.
I always hate to burden staff with extra work, but it seems to me that there might be some benefit in offering a payment plan to expedite the repairs. I don't know if the council feels the same, but...
Well, part of that would be, if it's a health and safety issue, we have the ability to go in and address it right away. And then, through that process as well, we could offer a payment plan for the property owners to be able to repay the city back. And so, there would be a difference of whether or not they're hiring a contractor, or if through, they have an option to hire the city to do it, and then repay the city for the work.
What would you suggest?
Well, based upon current staffing levels, it would be difficult for the city to be able to do the work in a timely manner. Another option would be to have on-call contractors that would be contracted to the city. And so, the city becomes basically the project manager, and then through that process, we're able to get repayment from the property owners. I think that we could come up with some different options for council's consideration, and it might be, you know, multiple options that we move forward with just based upon the situation at hand.
I think with the goal of trying to get it remediated or fixed.
Right.
Yeah. Yes, no, maybe so. I got one. I need one more.
Yeah, that's fine. Is it a new thing, the property owner pay for this?
No, it's not. Previously, we haven't had a lot of teeth until we had the nuisance ordinance. We didn't have a lot of teeth within the municipal code to be able to really pursue property owners fixing their sidewalks. And so, we would do notifications. We would get no response, and then things would linger to where the city would either end up just doing it, or, you know, that was basically the process that we had. So, through this ordinance, it gives us more flexibility and ability to enforce it, and then also work with the property owners to address these issues in a timely manner. Some of these issues are pretty significant. And so, like I said, in that situation, the city would step in if it's a health and safety issue. We immediately try to safe it up anyway, regardless of what's going on, to at least either cone it off or grind it down to address the immediate issue. But through this ordinance and by transferring, making sure it's very clear who the liability sits with, from a claim perspective, this helps us to be able to defend the city within these types of situations.
And then, one more question. From my understanding, that in between the sidewalk and the curb, that green strip, those tree, the green strip is actually city, and the trees are the city's trees?
Not necessarily. In some situations, the right of way is actually right behind the curb, and the property owner still owns the planter strip. The trees sometimes are city's trees, and sometimes they're not. It really depends upon the era of the subdivision as to who owns what.
And so, where would somebody go to determine, to ask if it's their trees or not?
The engineering division. We have records of the maps. We have the aerial photos. We have, you know, that ability to determine whether or not it's a city street tree or a private tree.
So, if, in the circumstance where it is a city tree, and the roots are causing the sidewalk damage, the property owner is still responsible to repair the damage caused by a city tree?
They've been irrigating the tree. It's not the city's irrigation system necessarily that's been irrigating the tree. And so, you know, it's that root system that's caused the raised sidewalk.
Would the property owner have the option to remove the trees?
We have had that situation where they have removed the trees. It's not, you know, once we have these tree-lined streets that, where the trees are being maintained by letting landscape maintenance districts, they might have, or what we might do is look at different options for either how the tree is replaced, or what type of tree is replaced with, to prevent those types of future shallow roots. And then, in terms of future subdivisions, and, you know, we've looked at our standard details in terms of making sure that that's not happening, so you have some type of tree root barrier.
I know there's one developer in town in particular that's a fan of no tree-lined streets.
Well, and that brings up a good point. A lot of the new subdivisions that are moving forward, the developers are opting not to do planter strips because it allows them to have bigger yards, front yards.
Backyard especially.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
To follow up to the mayor's question about, you know, can we finance or do things of that nature, if we did get into that, would we be able to secure our upfront cost in that loan, either by a lien on the property or attaching it possibly to property taxes to make sure that we were reimbursed at some point?
Yeah, that would be part of the process that we would identify. Right now, the way the ordinance is written, and then also the nuisance abatement ordinance, is that, you know, if they don't pay, then on an annual basis, we review those folks that are more than 90 days past due. They have the ability to participate in a hearing to explain why they haven't paid. And then, there's a list that comes before council for assessment to assess the property owner through the lien process. What we could do is, if we're going to finance, is figure out what that process looks like, whether it's a lien against the property in advance to make sure that we get repaid for the loan. And then, the other thing that we'd probably want to analyze too is a max cap in terms of our annual budget that we would put towards this. The other option too is, we do have CDBG funds that we typically receive on an annual basis for ADA improvements. And so, another option would be for those that just aren't capable of paying, to be able to utilize some of the CDBG funds. And I'd have to coordinate with Ben Moody to be able to help those property owners by utilizing the CDBG funds.
And some of those that we've used for property improvement, if I'm not mistaken, is like Freed and some others. We could probably partner with them and go through the same type of process then, correct? I get not hit.
I got a nod from Ben, yes.
That's good. Okay. Everything's conceptual right now, just trying to figure out where we might go to.
Yeah, with the caveat that it's supposed to be in certain areas.
All right, thank you.
Income levels.
Okay.
Anyone else? No?
Just a point of clarification. Are you suggesting an amendment to this?
No, I'm asking staff to come back to us with some options. Yes, yes. Okay. No public comment? Because there's no public here? How about online?
No public comment.
Okay. Back to the council for action.
Through the mayor. I move that we introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Yuba City establishing sidewalk maintenance and repair responsibilities by adding Chapter 11 Sidewalk Maintenance and Repairs to Title VI of the Yuba City Municipal Code, and waive the first reading. And staff has got further directions on the other items.
Second. All right. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, second by councilperson Kirchner on item number 19. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. And number 19 passes unanimously. Thank you, Diana.
Thank you.
On number 20, Heavy Equipment Lease Financing, Mr. Spencer Morrison.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This item is very similar to the fire engine purchase, where we purchased at a prior council meeting, then came back with a financing agreement with Bank of America. Tonight, I've got Christian Sprunger, Assistant Vice President with NHA Advisors LLC, who's going to take over this presentation. And Christian is on the Teams meeting screen right yonder. Take it away, Christian.
Thank you, Spencer. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members, any members of the public. As Spencer mentioned, my name is Christian Sprunger. I'm with NHA Advisors. We are the city's municipal financial advisor. And tonight's item is going to be discussing a lease purchase agreement with Bank of America to finance a backhoe and a street sweeper. So, if we could advance to the background slide? Thank you. By way of background, as Spencer mentioned, this item came before council. Well, the first part of this item came before council on October 19th, which was related to the approval of the purchase of those vehicles. Council authorized approximately $474,000 toward the purchase of the street sweeper and the backhoe loader. The purpose of purchasing this equipment is to modernize the city's fleet, as was discussed in more detail on October 19th. The cost of mechanical street sweeper is $316,000. The cost of the backhoe loader is $158,000. The cost of these items reflects some beneficial pricing to the city through Sourcewell, which is a member-driven cooperative that's designed to help municipalities, state governments, and nonprofit organizations purchase equipment. The street sweeper has about a six-month lead time between when the purchase happens and delivery of the street sweeper. The backhoe loader is available for delivery upon purchase. Could you go to the next slide, please? The city entered into a master equipment lease purchase agreement on August 26th of this year with Bank of America, and made two draws against that line of credit for the purchase of other equipment, fire vehicles, and some vehicles for the sewer fund. Tonight's item is to seek authorization for a third draw against that Bank of America line of credit. Before entering into that line of credit back in August, the city went through a competitive RFP process and received eight proposals from various national banks. Bank of America's terms were the most advantageous to the city in several ways, including the lowest interest cost. So, there was definitely some benefit, a lot of benefit was going with Bank of America originally. The 10-year term on this lease is strategic to tie to the useful life of the vehicles being purchased. And assuming we hold to our targeted December 7th funding date, Bank of America has locked the interest rate at 1.68%, and that's locked through the final maturity in 2031 for the lease. That rate results in a semi-annual repayment of about $26,400, which equates to about $52,800 per fiscal year. Next slide, please. With respect to timing, pending tonight's city council decision, we plan to close the lease and fund the purchases on December 7th. That's the deadline that Bank of America gave us to hold their locked rate through. So, that's the anticipated timing. The next slide, please. And just to, I guess, reiterate that tonight's recommendation, the recommendation for tonight's item is to adopt a resolution that authorized the execution and delivery of an equipment schedule to the master equipment lease purchase agreement for the acquisition, financing, and leasing equipment, and the execution of the documents needed to finalize that. With that, I'll see if there are any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions or concerns of the council? Seeing none. Public comment? Anything you want to add, Mr. Morrison, before I check online with Sierra?
No, I would just like to thank all the work that Christian put into this, and of course, the fleet department in making recommendations on vehicles as well. Tony Jane and Diana's crew have done a great job of supporting the city's fleet in that way.
Sierra, anybody online?
No public comment.
Back to the council for possible action on item number 20.
Through the mayor. I'd like to make a motion, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution... adopt a resolution of the city council of Uba City, City of Uba City, California authorizing the execution and delivery of an equipment schedule to the master equipment lease slash purchase agreement for the acquisition, financing, and leasing of certain equipment for the public benefit within the terms provided herein, authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents required in connection therewith, and authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution.
Done.
Second?
All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Kirchner, a second by Vice Mayor Shaw. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none. Item 20 passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
All right, as noted earlier, item 21 has been deferred to the, the December 21st meeting, correct? All right, future agenda items, anything that any of us want to provide to the city manager for an agenda item? None? Any comments from the public?
No public comment.
Okay. Item 23 is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to present to council tonight. I have a few items to present. The first is a reminder that on December 21st, we'll be holding the third hearing for the district mapping. And effective today, the live mapping function is available online for citizens to be able to use. And it's been tested by the city attorney as well as George from my office. And it's, spend some time doing it. It's actually pretty interesting. It does, it's, you push it out by census data and, and gives you an opportunity to kind of look at things. And so hopefully the public will take an opportunity to engage in that as we start to have maps roll forward at the December 21st meeting on the third hearing. A reminder, the fourth hearing is scheduled for January 8th, 2022. And then the fifth and final hearing is scheduled for February 1st, 2022. Another item is an item of, of support, recommendation, and recognition for our finance team. As you will note, the Government Finance Officers Association has recognized the City of Uba City and our finance team for the comprehensive annual report, financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. This certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting, this certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So I want to recognize Spencer Morrison and his team for continuing to receive this award and really his team and, and go through a lot of, a lot of effort to make sure that the city gets recognized. And so Spencer, on behalf of city manager's office, I do appreciate all that you do. So congratulations. And then lastly, item three, a person who hates to be recognized, but I could not not do it, is Diana Langley on November 9th was recognized as a 2021 Woman of the Year by Congressman Garimendi's office. And she, along with a handful of other folks in our community, were recognized. And, and as we all know, there's, there's not enough we can say good about Diana. And it's not enough that she would throw stuff at me if I keep talking about how good she does and how much we appreciate her. But congratulating her on that nomination. And staff did a lot of work with that. And it was Sierra and CM's office made a lot of effort to make sure we got that nomination in. And so congratulations, Diana, on receiving the award. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's report.
All right. Congratulations, Diana. I know how much you like to be congratulated. I would like to take a moment to also acknowledge that Councilperson Kirchner's wife was also a part of that ceremony and has done a lot for our community and, and had the opportunity to congratulate her in person, but also make sure that she understands how much we appreciate her contribution to the City of Uba City. Okay, with that, we will go ahead and move to city council reports. And this evening, Councilmember Kirchner is the leadoff hitter.
To the mayor. I'd like to tag on to what the city manager said, Spencer. Please, please let your team know how much they're, they're appreciated. That's quite an achievement. So, great job on that. So I'd like to say it's been a busy couple of weeks. Gilzeiser was canceled. Mosquito was, Vector was moved to this Thursday. And Oversight is moved to tomorrow. So having said that, it was mentioned earlier, I did attend the Woman of the Year, recognized Woman of the Year ceremony at, in Woodland at the Uba College Campus. Congressman Garimendi recognized women, outstanding women in the, the district and their achievements. What I thought was really special was at the, at the conclusion of that meeting, he, he went out of his way to mention what Shady, excuse me, what Casa de Esperanza has done. And if, and it, the reason why that, for me, it was so special is he's got a pretty large district. And for, so for him to, 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 to mention Casa and, and spend time talking about that, I thought that was pretty special. I did, I did attend the, the museum board meeting this, this month. It looks like they've got a new director on board after losing one to another, another area. Unfortunately, they're not going to move forward with their yearly fundraiser, Treason Tradition. They came up with more of a, a drive-through virtual option with the idea of going back to normalcy next year. This past weekend, I took, took the opportunity to go up to Shady Creek Outdoor, the facility up above Nevada City. They, they unveiled a new Raptor facility, which is kind of cool, where they have like a bald eagle and different things for kids to enjoy the, the outdoors learning experience. As you can probably tell, I am participating in No Shape November. And it's getting kind of itchy, but it's for, for a good cause, so. In addition to all that, I would like to do a shout out to Chief Alexander for putting on a great breakfast on November the 10th at the fire station number, number four and the city. It was well attended by, and for veterans, the city and others. So thank you, chief, for doing that. And lastly, I had the privilege of, of walking in the parade with my fellow council people to a very well-attended parade, Veterans Day Parade in Marysville. Weather was perfect. I don't think you could ask for a nicer day. But I surely enjoyed that. And that's the end of my report.
Thanks, sir. And next up is Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you. Don't want to belabor the point, but Spencer and Diana, congratulations to both of you. It's awesome. It's always nice to be able to hear the positive things and then spread the word out in the community when we're there. So it gives two more things to talk about. I think James did a really good job summarizing what's going on at SECOG, which is always extremely busy and productive down there. Subufka, we had a strategic plan update, four main goals, six objectives. We continue to enjoy the benefit of being the first area with a 200-year flood protection. Dredging continues out at Uba City Boat Dock area. And of course, now focus is now kind of transitioning a little bit over to our east, the east levee of the bypass, give us some protection in the south end down there. Attended Uba City Unified School District Liaison Meeting, which was pretty low-key. Essentially, all we did was go around the table and update the other agencies about what's going on in our own jurisdictions. Still good, always good to touch base with those folks and stay in contact. They were very appreciative of the things the city's been doing, particularly with safety around the, the schools. I think River Valley was specifically mentioned, along with some pedestrian crossing, crossing concerns there on, at Lincoln Elementary. So they were happy to see that. Regional housing was canceled. I did also happen to, unfortunately, I missed the Sikh parade. I put myself in a quarantine due to a potential COVID exposure, which turned out to be not. So that was good, but bad that I had to miss the parade. Also attended Veterans Day Parade, which I concur, was a wonderful day, very well-attended. And the weather was great. I didn't have to walk, though. It was the key of the candy shuttle. In a Miata or a BMW, BMW convertible. Also, I, I couldn't remember, couldn't quite remember. Got the haircut for a Miata, so I don't know, it's all good. Well, another thing I did was, it was very interesting and it's, I think it's probably, I think still, for whatever reason, it seems if it's under-advertised, but yet it's a wonderful thing for the community and that's the placeyum. We had business after hours down there. Not necessarily huge turnout, but I tell you, my granddaughters go there and they love it. And it's very affordable, very well managed, very well equipped. And so if anybody has an opportunity to spread the word for, for little kids to go down there, some, a play place, and they clean up, how much, that's, that's awesome. So, and, and some good, good things down there. Touch a Truck, I believe, is coming up fairly soon, which is always very well-attended and interesting for the, for the kids to see. So that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been kind of a busy week. I attended, I attended the GSEC Chairs Meeting in Sacramento. And what I've discovered over the past year is how much in tandem, SECOG and GSEC kind of dovetail into all these projects together. So, and by hitting it from two different angles, I can tell we're starting to get a little bit more traction up north because we're actually, we're really engaged, the two of us, I know. And, and I'm seeing that crossover. Yeah. Oh, no, it's all good. You already ditched me with my BMW. I get it. So, so anyway, the key presentation they gave, this one, and it's something that, you know, we all should ponder, and it was about innovation. And it was really, what do you think the biggest challenges and opportunities we're going to face in the next five to 10 years? Some interesting things came out of it because we all think it's going to be the economy and this. But a lot of things started surfacing that it's probably going to be how AI factors into our normal, everyday life because of the things we've been through through COVID and how we're going to embrace that. And so tying that into SECOG and how the green means go and the development of the communities and the, the trails, I mean, it just all starts dovetailing in. So looking forward to bringing more back from that, but that was, that was the gist of this meeting. Also had the EDC, Uba Center EDC. And probably the biggest item from the EDC is they are, when I say solve it, I don't mean that they were in trouble. They, all the loans that they had outstanding, that they had taken to, to loan money out has been all paid off. So they are actually truly functioning as their own bank now, more or less, because they have money in the bank to lend, they're not borrowing money to lend. And so that's, that's a good thing for them. Their, their financials are in very good shape. I also had the pleasure and opportunity to spend a half a day with Mr. John Nicoletti. And I appreciate his time with me. He took me around so that I could get not only the knowledge we get from setting on the commissions and committees and at the council and what we see in the community, but really taking me out and showing me what's going on with our homeless community and how we are reaching them and how all that comes together. And so to John, I want to say thank you. That really helped me understand many more things. Sikh community, thank you for holding the festival and the parade. Wonderful. Thank you for honoring us and having us there. And thank you for letting us honor you tonight. And then Veterans Day, participated in the parade. But the day before, I was asked to speak as an Air Force veteran at the Uba City Charter School. And connecting with those kids and helping them understand what it means because we have a generation that really hasn't seen a lot of turmoil and war. And walking them through the past basically 100 years of World War II, our veterans coming home to ticker tape parades and people walking them all the way up to Vietnam where our guys were not welcome home at all. And then you tie that in with where we're suffering in the homeless population. So, you know, veterans hold a very near and dear place in my heart. And I'm going to reiterate what, what everybody else has said, I like the smiles in the back back there. Both you guys, well-deserving of everything. And it's like, don't say anything, your smiles says enough. Thank you for all your work, your team's work, and everything that you guys do. And I will close with, with this remark, and I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, thank you for, for everything that you've done this past year and how you ran the meetings. It's been awesome. So just want to, just want to say thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Spencer, to your team, make sure they understand how proud I am of them getting their award and you as well. We had the, the opportunity to work with you closely on the budget and who knows, that may happen again, but I, I look forward to it if that opportunity presents itself. And Diana, as always, thank you for what you do. Veterans recognition breakfast at, at Fire Station Four. What a wonderful opportunity to recognize the veterans of the city as well as others. Mr. Kirchner's father joined us. So thank you, chief. It looks like you're still there to your crew. Tell Chief LeBlu that he's a man after my own heart. Since he burned bacon, he's now banished to a dishwashing duty as well. Had the opportunity to participate in the veterans parade with the Miata. I mean, BMW. Well, I appreciate the, the parade organizers. I mean, that, that thing was special. There were so many people there and, and the day turned out awesome. And thanks for the rest of us. I think we all had a pretty good time. Councilperson Harris even showed up after a route canal, so that tells you his commitment to honoring the veterans. And it was good to see you there. And I was happy to have you driving and not getting a wreck. But participated in the, in the Nagar Kurtan. And I know several of us were able to get there to be recognized by the Temple Board. Always a special event. Glad to see that they were able to bring that back to the community. It's nice to see some of these events, you know, opening back up, whether it's the veterans' parade or the Sikh parade, you know, and seeing our, our people in our community get out, smiles on their face, having a great time. I, I think to, one thing that I would suggest to us today as a council, if you give me a second to, to make sure I get this right, is I, I think that from time to time, we get a lot of, of asks of the city from different organizations, whether they be nonprofits or, or for-profit organizations. And as much as I think as a city, we are looked to as, as a leader and someone that they can come to for financial help, many times that conflicts with those priorities that we have about making sure that we take care of things that the city needs to take care of. So tonight, I am suggesting and, and asking if the council would be interested in asking staff to, to produce a workshop. This would be after the first of the year. And the reason of the, or the purpose of the workshop would be not only to educate myself, but others in the community, especially those who ask us for funds, for, to educate them on all these pots of, of money that I think they think are just almost, you know, always available. And I'm talking specifically about CARES Act money, ARPA money. And now we have this, as Mr. Corliss mentioned, this infrastructure money. And I think many times people think that they're, you know, that's just money that comes in and then we can spend however we want. But as a council, we know and staff even knows better than we, that there are certain things that that money can be appropriated or spent for. And if, if city council's in agreement, I think asking our staff to, to put the bones of a workshop together, invite those agencies or organizations that ask us for funds so they understand not only what they can ask for, but some of the constraints that we have as a city in, in funding those, those asks. So if I get at least three nods, then I think the city manager, and it looks like I've got four. So again, that'll be under the next mayor's watchful eye and, you know, for scheduling, but I do think that would be extremely valuable. This evening, I want to close in memory of Pat Miller. And many of us knew Pat Miller. She was a frequent visitor to these chambers over the many, many years. She passed away on November 3rd. She was married, married to the late Charles Miller for 37 years. They had six children, many grandchildren and... They had six children, many grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Pat was a member of several clubs throughout her residency in our area, Marysville Rotary, Sutter Yuba Republican Women, Sutter County Republican Central Committee, and she served as the president of the Sutter County Taxpayer Association for many, many years. She was an appropriate and sometimes energized watchdog of how this city and this county spent their tax revenue. And, you know, many at times would probably feel like, you know, that she was hard to get along with. But I think her heart was always in the right place and she was always trying to do what she thought was right. And for that, I'd like to close the meeting this evening in her memory. And also to signal that our next meeting, which is December 7th, is our traditional, what we call the changing of the guard, where we will be selecting our new mayor and our new vice mayor. And that should be a very good night for all of us. And with that, I will close the meeting.